Please stand for the pledge of... Madam Clerk Malcolts. Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza. Stand by, we have two councilmembers participating via Zoom. They're at a conference right now. Let me try to get one more turn. Councilmember Mendoza.
Alexis, no, we can't hear you very well.
While we just heard you. Councilmember Mendoza. Hello. Councilmember Obeso Martinez.
May I approach him, Obrana?
Here.
And Mayor Burnworth.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza. Councilmember Obeso Martinez. Okay, so we'll come back to that. We're going to proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance while we get these technical difficulties sorted out. Mr. Tucker, will you please give us the front row.
Alexis, if we missed the roll call, I am present. But as I mentioned to you via text, we do show that you're muted still.
Okay, thank you.
There we go, there you are.
Okay, so if you... Councilmember Mendoza and Councilmember Obeso Martinez, if you can confirm that you were both on for the record, please.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council. We asked of your poll, item E3, for future agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, do we have any action taken in closed session?
The council discussed one public employee performance evaluation of the city manager, and direction was given, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, public appearances. C1, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Do I have any public comments from anybody in council chambers? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, did we have any public comments submitted via email?
For tonight's meeting, that would be a no. We did have two comments submitted via email last meeting. They are reflected in the meeting minutes. If they would like their comments to be read, they can resubmit them to have them read.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item D, special presentations for National Cancer Awareness... or National Cancer Prevention Awareness Month.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to welcome Melissa to the podium. If you would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Melissa Coriel. I'm here with the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. I just want to say thank you for this proclamation. Cancer Prevention Month is a perfect opportunity to raise awareness and screening and early prevention of cancer. But let's not also forget to create smoke-free outdoor spaces in order to promote a healthy community. All secondhand smoke exposure produced by cigarettes, vaping, and marijuana is harmful. There are over 70 cancer-causing chemicals in secondhand smoke. Everyone deserves to breathe clean, smoke-free air, including outdoor spaces like parks where children are playing. This is why the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, and ACS CAN, and Project LEAVE it volunteers, here in the back, are advocating for a comprehensive, smoke-free outdoors policy in the City of Imperial. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And so we do have a proclamation for the City of Imperial, so I'm going to read it aloud. Whereas despite the incredible advancements we have made in recent years, cancer remains one of the leading causes of death in the United States. And whereas the City of Imperial acknowledges those in our community behind the statistic who know the distress of receiving a cancer diagnosis, and their family members or friends who courageously fight this disease and too often lose the battle. And whereas the City of Imperial Council recognizes early screenings and detection can save lives. And whereas the City is committed to helping our citizens lead healthier lives by providing access to health education and cancer preferences... or cancer prevention services. And whereas the City of Imperial City Council expresses our appreciation to the American Cancer Society and other such organizations that provide policy-based solutions designed to eliminate cancer as a major health problem. Now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Catherine Burnworth, on behalf of the City of Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February as National Cancer Prevention Month. So, and then we have a proclamation for you as well.
Fuck.
No.
Yeah.
Councilmember, um, Obaso Martinez? Mayor Protim Amparano?
Here.
And Mayor Burnworth?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Obaso Martinez? Okay, so we'll come back to that, we're gonna proceed with the pledge of allegiance while we get these technical difficulties sorted out.
Alexis, if we missed the roll call, I am present, but as I mentioned to you via text, we do show that you're muted still.
Okay, thank you, um...
There we go, there you are.
Okay, so if you, um, Councilmember, uh, Mendoza and Councilmember Obaso Martinez, if you can confirm that you were both on for the record, please.
Present.
They're present. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Council, we asked of you to pull item E three for future agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, do we have any action taken in closed session?
Uh, the council discussed one public employee performance evaluation of the city manager and direction was given, no reportable action, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, public appearances. C one, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you address, wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Do I have any public comments from anybody in council chambers? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, did we have any, um, public comments submitted via email?
For tonight's meeting, that would be a no. Um, we did have two comments submitted via email last meeting. They, uh, are reflected in the meeting minutes. If they would like, uh, their, uh, comments to be read, they can resubmit them to, um, have them read.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, moving on to item D, special presentations for National Cancer Awareness or National Council Prevention Awareness Month.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to welcome Melissa, uh, to the podium, if you would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Melissa Coriel, I'm here with the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. Um, I just wanna say thank you for this proclamation. Cancer Prevention Month is a perfect opportunity to raise awareness and screening and early prevention of cancer. But let's not also forget to create smoke-free outdoor spaces in order to promote a healthy community. All secondhand smoke exposure produced by cigarettes, vaping, and marijuana is harmful. There are over seventy cancer-causing chemicals in secondhand smoke. Everyone deserves to breathe clean, smoke-free air, including an outdoor, uh, spaces like parks where children are playing. This is why the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, and ACS CAN, and Project Viva volunteers, um, here in the back, are advocating for a comprehensive, smoke-free outdoors policy in the City of Imperial. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. And so we do have a proclamation for the City of Imperial, so I'm gonna read it aloud. Whereas despite the incredible advancements we have made in recent years, cancer remains one of the leading causes of death in the United States. And whereas the City of Imperial acknowledges those in our community behind the statistic who know the distress of receiving a cancer diagnosis, and their family members or friends who courageously fight this disease and too often lose the battle. And whereas the City of Imperial Council recognizes early screenings and detection can save lives. And whereas the city is committed to helping our citizens lead healthier lives by providing access to health, education, and cancer preferences prevent, or cancer prevention services. And whereas the City of Imperial City Council expresses our appreciation to the American Cancer Society and other such organizations that provide policy-based solutions designed to eliminate cancer as a major health pros, uh, problem. Now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Catherine Burnworth, on behalf of the City of Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of February as National Cancer Prevention Month. And then we have a proclamation for you as well.
And I just wanna thank, um, all of you, we have a bunch of students back there, I wanna thank you.
For your activism in our community. Um, it's really brave to do things like that as you do, and Melissa, as we talked about earlier, I didn't realize that within the City of Imperial, it's not against ordinance to smoke in parks and, as promised, that's something myself, as the mayor, and our staff is gonna be diligently working on. Thank you. Do you have any comments from the council?
Very much for other work you do.
Moving on to E consent agenda, all items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council in one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request an item be considered separately, that item will be then taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do I have a motion for, to approve the consent agenda?
To approve the consent agenda as amended?
Do I have a second?
One second.
I, I thought we were talking about taking one out, was that on the consent, did we pull it? Okay, thank you.
So I have a motion by councilmo, or Mayor Protim Amparano, and a second by Councilmember Obaso Martinez, please vote. Oh, roll call vote, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Obaso Martinez?
Aye, or yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Amparano?
Yes.
Mayor Burnworth?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to item F, public hearings. Um, I'll open this public hearing at seven thirty-one PM for F one, subject, public hearing of the city council discuss the vacation of public right-of-way portion of O Street between Twelfth Street and Thirteenth Street within the City of Imperial. And a staff report, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, the item before you is an intent to vacate public hearing to vacate and or abandon a portion of O Street between Twelfth and Thirteenth Street. The applicant, Mr. Joshua Quintero, is requesting this abandonment to allow adequate space for a proposed industrial park. Mr. Quintero is a property owner of all parcels abutting that portion of O Street. A public hearing before the city planning, city's planning commission was held on October twenty-sixth, twenty-two, under resolution finding the abandonment of conformance with the city's general plan was adopted. This is the first intent to vacate public hearing. The second public hearing is scheduled for March first, twenty-two-three. Tonight's intent to vacate public hearing was duly noticed at the project site for two consecutive weeks, and in the Holtville Tribune and Clexico Chronicle on January nineteenth and January twenty-sixth, twenty-two-three. Notices were also mailed to all property owners within three hundred feet of the project site. Staff recommends city council conduct the intent to vacate public hearings, and unless sufficient evidence to the contrary is presented, staff recommends adoption of resolution twenty-two-three dash zero-two approving the vacation of the public right-of-way portion of O Street between Twelfth and Thirteenth Street. Staff and Mr. Quintero are present to answer any questions you may have.
Do I have any questions from the council?
Um, the only one I had was, um, I know Dennis was researching, you know, about the property or the, as attorney, city attorney. He was researching to see if we could actually...
Councilperson Tucker, I understand an issue came up at the, uh, planning commission as to whether or not the city's interest in this area was a right-of-way, uh, or an easement versus a fee interest. And I, and I'm my, I'm given to understand that staff has confirmed that the interest is a right-of-way, uh, which means it is fits within the process that's set forth in the Streets and Highways Code for abandonment. Now, if you, the only other thing I would add is if you look at the proposed conditions of approval, I understand there are some utilities there, and so, uh, uh, those utilities and the city's right to maintain those utilities, well, that part will not change. But the surface use, uh, can be, uh, so long as it doesn't interfere with our utilities, the, uh, applicant would have the opportunity to make use of the surface of what used to be O Street.
All right, thank you.
Do I have any other questions from the council? Do I have any me, uh, comments from any members of the public? Seeing none, then I'll close this public hearing at seven thirty-four. Um, council discussion, um, I'd like to entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
A resolution.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Amparano, and a second by Councilmember Tucker. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Councilmember Obaso Martinez?
Yes.
Count, Mayor Protim Amparano?
Yes.
Mayor Burnworth?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item G, action items. G one, subject declaration of Imperial Police Department motorcycle as surplus. Sergeant Rubio?
Hi, good evening, uh, Mayor, Madam, and Council. So the Imperial Police Department is requesting the Imperial City Council's consideration to declare the department, the department's current, uh, two thousand and six BMW police motorcycle as surplus. If declared, uh, the police motorcycle will be, uh, sold or auctioned, and money's made on this motorcycle will go toward, uh, a traffic safety program.
How many, um, comments or questions from the council?
So on, on, on the sale of this motorcycle, was that through general fund, cops' money, how, do you recall how we received that?
That's a good question.
Yeah, and as far as the traffic plan, safety plan that we have, do we have something already that's drafted or something that's gonna be drafted, or where, how is that working? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have any comments from staff?
Um, yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, I would suggest that in, in a, if your intention is to, uh, approve, uh, the, the, uh, disposition of the motorcycle, that, that's, that is part of that we confirm, uh, uh, that there aren't any limitations or conditions based on how we acquired it back in two thousand and six or two thousand and five, whenever it was.
Sure, limitations are over on that, but that'd definitely be a good thing to look into.
I, I, as I recall, there's been, there was a prior instance with a, a police vehicle where, uh, uh, it turned out that, that, uh, there was some limitations even many years later on disposition of the vehicle. So we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that...
Take that.
Mr. Rubio, would it be your recommendation to table this item to our next council meeting?
Uh, that, that, that is an option, that, that motorcycle's been sitting there, but certainly if you, if you were to move forward, we would make sure that the act, that the action uh, would be, uh, in line with any restrictions.
That, like that, there is no limitations in it forward?
Is that part of your...
That's what I said.
Are you motioned?
Yeah.
Perfect, all right. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Forward.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Amparano?
Yes.
Councilmember Obaso Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Mayor Burnworth?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Um, G two, subject, uh, Morning Star Subdivision Unit One A, staff report, please.
Madam Mayor, if I could quickly, um, I sent a message, can we get the screen share stopped because we're still seeing the abandonment, uh, presentation on our screen? There we go, thank you.
Is that better? Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, city staff conducted regular building inspections for the, during the construction of the off-site street improvements for Morning Star subdivision unit one A. Uh, final walk was completed on January twenty-third, twenty-third, twenty-two-three. At this time, improvements were bound to be complete. Uh, staff recommends approval and acceptance of off-site street improvements for Morning Star subdivision unit one A. Staff also recommends the reduction of the bond by up to ninety percent, uh, with the remaining ten percent being kept, uh, for the one-year warranty period. Uh, thank you, I'll, I'll stand for any questions.
Do I have any questions from the council? All right, seeing none, um, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approval and acceptance of off-site improvements. And is it, and, and number two, okay, then authorize bond reduction up to ninety percent, keep the remaining ten percent for the one-year warranty period.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. So I have a, a motion by Councilmember Tucker and a second by Councilmember Mendoza. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Protim Amparano?
Yes.
Councilmember Obaso Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Burnworth?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item G three, the subject, uh, Republic Services Annual Rate Adjustment. Do I have a staff report?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor and, and Council, uh, City of Imperial has had for a number of years an agreement with, uh, Republic Services for solid waste, uh, collection and disposal. Uh, uh, one of the, and, and then, as a footnote, they also provide the, uh, similar services to the cities of, uh, Clexico and Brawley. Uh, all, all, all of those contracts provide for an annual adjustment based upon, uh, the Consumer Price Index. Uh, there is a, there is, as you would see from the staff report, there is a variance, uh, amongst the contracts. Um, Republic Services, uh, has, uh, uh, indicated that it is willing to basically standardize that, and so what is before you is, uh, would be a four percent, which is, uh, 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 less than what our contract might otherwise authorize. Um, and, and so we would recommend, and you could see from the staff report, that, uh, the, uh, increase would result in, uh, a dollar, a dollar and a couple of cents, uh, increase, uh, in the, uh, customers, uh, residential customers, uh, monthly bill. Just what, what you, uh, under discussion amongst the cities and Republic Services, there's also a provision in the agreement uh, that would provide for, uh, a, a potential for an adjustment based upon extraordinary expenses, and that, that's a matter that's under discussion, uh, between the cities and Republic Services.
Do I have any comments from the council?
Yeah, um, Dennis, uh, you and the other cities had meetings, correct, with the, with the trash company? Didn't they want more at one time, or?
Well, there, there, like I said, there's two, two aspects to the adjustment. One is a, a Consumer Price Index-based adjustment. And so, all, all, all of the contracts, city of Brawley, Clexico, and, and ours provide for an increase based upon the Consumer Price Index, and that's what's before you this evening. Uh, so, uh, uh, that's basically set forth in the contract, so it, it's, uh, uh, we would recommend that you go forward with the increase on the basis that it's, uh, called for in the contract. The other aspect is that what, what I referred to a few minutes ago as extraordinary expenses. We typically see that, and we've seen it in the past, when you, when you have, uh, a, a, a severe spike in fuel prices, for example. And so that, that is one example. We've, we've experienced here, uh, you know, supply chain issues and, and spikes in just acquiring equipment, all those things. So those are the kinds of things, uh, we, uh, might expect to see in those discussions. Uh, but again, those are under, uh, that's not before you tonight, but you should expect to see something in the future in that, in that regard, and, and, uh, we'll be working with the other cities and also involve, uh, uh, Mr. Herrera in those discussions.
And is the increase that, um, drastic service, or I can't recall which, how you worded it, that other increase is at council discretion, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's also negotiated, right? It's part of the contract.
This one is part of the contract, the other one's negotiable.
So, real quick question, I know that, how many more years on the contract?
Twenty, twenty-four.
Twenty-six? Um, does this increase, um, also include the street sweeper? Does this increase also include for the street sweeper, is that gonna be something separate, is that included into this contract?
The, the, this is...
Just the CPI for this?
This particular one is only rel, related to the, to the solid waste. So, um, uh, I, I, I'm not aware that there's any plan to come back to you with, with anything that would have impacted the street sweep, what we pay...
And that's all within one package?
It's, we, we have one con, one contract. Well, and there are amendments to the original contract.
Okay.
Are there any more increases that are within this contract that we'll see within the next three years?
Um, I, I believe the CPI is an annual. And, and because of the nature of the extraordinary fees, Republic could, within the next three years, make a request to the city uh, based on whatever happens in the future that they would consider to be, uh, extra, uh, unexpected, extraordinary sort of expense.
But that increase could be turned down by the council, correct?
The extraordinary, that's, yeah, that, that's the negotiable part.
Okay, good.
Can we, um, I was, I think we mentioned this before, remind the, everybody what services are available, like bulky goods, pickups, um, your ability to go to the dump X amount of times, what services are available for you? I think that sometimes gets forgotten. And you just see a, a price increase, right?
If I, if I may, Councilmember Obaso Martinez, yes, um, we, we are currently, um, putting out a sporadic social media campaign with, with reminders of that, but for those residents tuning into this, um, our contract does allow for, um, a, uh, one per month bulk pickup, uh, what those items are. Um, could be, you know, if you're, you're throwing out that old couch or that mattress, and you can call and get that scheduled, um, that's a service to the residents of Imperial. You also do get six passes, um, per year, per calendar year, out to the Imperial landfill, um, for those. Um, in addition to the regular trash and waste collection services, there are also a, there also is an in-yard service program, so any individuals um, that have trouble taking out their trashcans to the curbside, um, whether it be for, um, uh, any sort of disability or just, you know, mobility issues, um, you're able to call and, and be a part of that list, uh, for as long as you may need it. Um, and any other additional services, I know our utility clerks at City Hall are more than happy to provide that information to you, and, and we can assist those residents navigate some of those services in the meantime.
Great, thank you. And what about our street sweeping services? That's a part of this contract?
Yes, the, the street sweeping services are a part of this contract. Uh, Republic Services does contract with a, a third-party provider. Um, and I am under the impression that the current street sweeping map is being updated um, by staff to include all of our new subdivisions, streets and roads, um, that have since, uh, gone live and now have residence and trash and recycling services on them. Um, but if there's something specific to that, I do know that we, we also have a representative from Republic Services in the audience, uh, Mr. George Taylor, um, or if we can stand for any further questions you have on those services.
Are plans to look at new street sweeping services? Within your contract?
Counsel, um, we, when we originally put the, uh, the contract in place, we had a company called Dixon Street Sweeping. They were since bought out by, uh, SCA or Street Sweeping. Um they were since bought out by uh SCA or Street Sweeping Corp. of America. Uh unfortunately, there are not a whole lot of street sweeping um facilities in in the area. Uh we're always talking with folks, we do have a meeting set up uh with the city uh next Wednesday uh where I'll have the general manager from SCA, uh and then Marco, uh David Ramirez, a couple of other folks, and we'll try and nail down some issues that we've heard have cropped up. Uh but at at the moment, we don't have any issues, or excuse me, we don't have any indications that we're going to do anything with street sweeping. We don't have any other companies to go to, uh we may have to do something ourselves, uh but at this point, it's still subcontracted with SCA.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Um did we, wait, I have one, did we used to do the cleanup day like at the fair where you can go and take your stuff? I don't remember, was that years ago, or am I imagining things?
We do two cleanups uh per year, a fall cleanup and a spring cleanup prior to COVID, it was at the fairgrounds, yes, um. And and we are moving into a post uh pandemic world, so uh if you will. Um and so we are discussing with Republic Services staff of getting the cleanup moved back to the fairgrounds for for these next cleanups this year.
Okay, great, thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by council member Tucker and a second by council member Obeso Martinez, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Council member Tucker?
Yes.
For Mendoza?
Yes.
Council member Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Otim Amparano?
Yes.
And Mayor Burnworth?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, moving on to item G four. Uh this the subject of future of healthcare in Imperial County, um this is a discussion item amongst the council um to talk about how we wanna be part of that discussion moving forward. Um I attended the roundtable that there was last Saturday, and on the panel was um a bunch of different healthcare providers. The one thing that as the mayor of the City of Imperial that I did see missing, absent from that was Imperial, you know, our constituents not having a voice at the table. Um you know, we're sandwiched in between the two hospitals, and when they talk about, you know, creating one big blanket Imperial County Healthcare District, you know, my thing is, if you're gonna make changes to something that includes a tax on my constituents, then we need to be sitting at the table as well. Because if we're not represented, then we don't have a voice, and so I made that very clear to um the people that were at the table and including those roundtable discussions, that I was not happy that we were not included in those discussions, and I'm ho- very hopeful that we can moving forward. Um but yeah, that was my biggest concern, and with that, I'll open up the discussion for the other council members.
I was gonna ask what their response was when you voiced your concern on that.
Um I got told that we would be included in these discussions uh moving forward, um you know, it wasn't it was, you know, okay, we'll include you guys coming up, they were gonna talk about some um meetings that they were gonna have with Laughco this week, but then moving forward, they were gonna schedule something with us.
Sorry. Go ahead, go ahead, Robert.
No, you go first.
No, I lost my, go, promise, go.
No, so I did have a conversation with our local EMS provider uh from Imperial County that uh our Imperial residents were and have been, majority have been going to city of, to PMH instead of El Centro Regional. Back in the day, they used to take them to El Centro Regional because it was a shorter route mile wise, and then now uh because of traffic congestion and all that, it's shorter and faster to, well, it's faster to go to Brawley. So all of our, I was told then that uh there is a plan in place to, for all Imperial residents to go to PMH.
Yeah, speaking on that, the cutoff used to be Keystone Road back in the day.
Correct.
Yeah, and that has changed. Our population has changed, and so, you know, I've worked at both hospitals for many years, they both have their own personalities, let's say that, um but things have changed, and it would be nice in my opinion, not account, you know, my healthcare position, that if we could have a more unified hospital or district, now how that's gonna happen, who knows? Hopefully, we can have those discussions, but as a city, we do need to be at that table because we are in the middle between both. And our residents, you know, often go to the emergency rooms if needed, and with now the lack of pediatric care and OB care, that's gonna put a little bit more strain on pioneers.
I was having a conversation today about this, and so what are the options uh that we have here? Um so I asked this doctor that I was having a conversation with, is, what is it? Do we have Y R M C in Yuma? Do we have uh JFK in Indio, Eisenhower, what's it, Palm Desert, Ranch Mirage and all that area? Um and then there's San Diego. Those are the options, and unless we're gonna be going south into Mexico, but coming back is gonna be the 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 tough part, but uh those are all for things that we can control, things out of our control, all we're gonna have is PMH come April, what is it, April first, April something?
I understand A C R M C is not closing.
They're not closing?
They're not closing.
They're not closing, but they're not gonna be taking a lot more patients, they're gonna have to take patients just as as the moment comes. Um what I was also told is that, to the point that they're actually, uh I was told that they were stationing um ambulances in the parking lot for this reason, so I heard this uh week and a half ago. Unless things have changed in that timeframe, um I think uh I emailed the the plan that they had in place, so it's available.
Are you talking like a critical care transport in case, like an ambulance available?
So if something happens and and they they need to move them fast, and that's, they're they're gonna be there stationed at El Centro Regional. I mean, that was the conversation about a week and a half ago, so um like I said, I don't know if things have changed since then. We'll see, I'm hoping that we can come up with some good solution for our residents, for our county.
Yeah, my biggest takeaway from that roundtable discussion was, you know, the the wanting to have an all-inclusive healthcare district that includes all of Imperial County. The biggest thing that I have an issue with was the talking about of imposing of a new tax onto your property taxes. Um and for me, if, you know, you are gonna increase my property taxes, well, I wanna in, I want better service. You know, and I would say that some, you know, care that we get at the hospital sometimes is mediocre at best, and a lot of us will go outside of the county for this, so that's kinda where I'm, I I'm kinda stuck, and I think we're all kinda stuck in between like a rock and a hard place, and we, you know, are very much aware that we need both hospitals to be open, but you know, it's how did we get there to do it, so if we can send um have staff send a letter to have um the council uh in those discussions about how we move forward, um I would appreciate that. Do I have any further comments from the council?
I have to reach.
Alright, moving, and actually on that, does our healthcare for our um employees, do we give them reach insurance?
Yes, all em- all employees and and those members of their household do receive reach.
Moving on to item H, uh reports, do we have any department reports to give? Uh police, Sergeant Rubio.
Just to clarify on the purchase of the motorcycle, um it was purchased through the Ops uh Office of Safety, Traffic Safety O T S uh back in oh six. And the only limitation is that that money, whatever's made from the sale, needs to go back into that sort of program. Great, thank you. The quick turnaround.
Parks, Mr. Lopez.
Yes, um uh Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you may already know, we've got our uh tri-tip coming around the corner with every day that passes, it just reminds me that it's getting closer and closer. Um I wanted to remind everybody uh watching that we still do have some spaces available for com- for competing. If you call yourself a a self-certified uh grill master, come and join us and show show the City of Imperial your skills. Um again, that's uh our deadline for uh competitors, it's uh this Friday, end of day. So we still have some spaces available, uh you're welcome to come to our city library and fill out the application to compete, and uh our event is the twenty fifth, um five to nine. So come on, join us, uh everybody from the public, and like I said, if you're uh wanting to show your grilling skills, come sign up by this Friday at the end of the day at the city library. Um one more thing, uh Sun Runners uh car show is creeping up on us as well, uh March eighteenth. Uh Eager Park from uh ten AM to three PM, we're gonna have a lot of cool cars at Eager Park on display for everybody to enjoy. So that's all I have.
Hey Tony, um any other department announcements? Awesome, moving on to city manager report, Mr. Merida.
Um nothing from me, Madam Mayor.
Perfect, m- m- moving on to mayor mayor and council member reports, um does anybody at my council have any reports from their committees? Anybody?
Or whoever.
You, council member Obeso Martinez.
Okay, it's hard to tell because of the echo, sorry about that.
No worries.
So I sit on the Friends of Imperial Parks um board, so I'm excited about that, it's our nonprofit to help support our parks here in the City of Imperial. So as Tony mentioned, um they will be having a booth uh serving adult beverages, we'll just put it that way. The market days on the twenty fifth will come out and um partake in that and help uh raise some funds there. And then um next week, they will be posting applications for residents who are interested on serving on the board for Friends of Imperial Parks. So that information will be available, Alexis has mentioned that that will be probably next week posted. And they're looking for residents of the City of Imperial, so that's exciting um to have some resident input on the board, so. Questions, anybody, for me, more Tony, not Alexis.
Thank you, council member Mendoza, do you have any comments or nothing?
Uh the only thing that I can report is I had the opportunity to uh participate or at least sit in on the ICTC and LTA meeting, uh Mr. Amparano or uh Mayor Pro Tim Amparano is is actually the appointee to that, but he graciously encouraged me to attend just so that I can get up to speed and learn what's going on. Um so that was an interesting meeting, and um I hopefully will be able to continue part, you know, participating or at least attending those and learning what's going on in the realm of the ICTC and LTA. And the only other thing is, as uh you all know, is uh council member Obeso Martinez and myself are currently at Universal City uh participating in the California League of Cities uh mayor new, I'm sorry, new council member and new mayor's academy, it's so, we've only had one day down, and it's a long day of a lot of information to fill the brain, and we're looking forward to the last two days of this academy, thank you.
Yeah, do I have any other council member comments from any of my two sitting to my?
I did attend ICTC meeting, uh pretty much it was just business as normal, our auditors, different things like that, so um but it was interesting, um we'll leave it at that, we got a couple more things to cover this month, so we'll cover that stuff. I'll try to report that uh in the month of March.
Perfect, um I have nothing to report, um I've been in talks with our um state legislators, uh specifically with Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia's office, um talking about what different ways to help get our SR eighty six project funded. Um I do believe that the city manager and myself will be meeting with the Department of Transportation in the sometime uh in the near future, but that's just one of the many things we have going on behind the scenes trying to get um some improvements to our city, so I look forward to those. And with that, um adjourn this meeting at eight oh four PM um until our next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand three at seven, or two thousand and twenty three at seven PM, thank you.